This is a special session. Tonight, the prayer will be led by Mr. Meeks with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Lomig. You would stand.
Almighty heavenly Father, we bow before you again tonight. And again, Lord, we thank you for the many blessings that you've given to us. We thank you for the opportunities that we had in this country to gather in rooms like these and to govern the affairs of man. And we ask now, dear Lord, that you would give us wisdom from above, that we would have godly discernment in the decisions that are made in this room. And that you bless these men that stand here tonight and again, give them wisdom. We pray that you be with all your public servants this country over, those that would stand daily to sacrifice their own lives and their own time with families, dear Lord, and forgive us for where we fail you. And we ask all these things in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My name is Madison here, please. I'm the one.
If you would, do the roll call.
Scott?
Here.
Connor?
I haven't heard anything from Mr. Connor.
Hicks?
Here.
Perez?
I haven't heard anything from Mr. Perez either.
Poling?
Here.
Lemming?
Here.
Middlesworth?
Here.
At this time, we'll go ahead and let's go ahead into new business. County Sheriff's Department Union contract. Right now, we don't have a contract for consideration, but I'll go ahead and turn it over to the committee chairman, Mr. Scott, for the update.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have some good news. I believe we have been meeting with representatives from the Sheriff's Union in regards to that contract. We have a mostly agreed upon contract. There is still one item remaining to make that contract official. What we do have an agreement on is the following. We have an agreement for a 7% increase in base pay to 2023 for 2024. There will be a, this is a two-year agreement, so there will be a 0% increase for 2025 and a 7% increase overall for 2024. We were able to build in some specialty pay. As a lot of us know, that there are additional responsibilities that Sheriff's Department members take care of. One of those are K-9 positions. So we were able to get an adjustment for specialty pay for K-9 positions. We were also able to give five accident reconstruction team members a little bit of extra for those responsibilities. And then we were able to adjust comp hours. Sheriff Department members are making up to and maxing out up to four days. Right now, we are awaiting retiree insurance. There's the Sheriff's Department and the commissioners are meeting. And from that regard, once we have that ironed out, then we will have a solid contract and we will have a contract that will be ready to be signed.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
I would be remiss if I didn't mention, I appreciate Mr. Shields and his leadership and, you know, in these negotiations and then as well as yourself and Mr. Poling for taking this very, very important role. And it has been pretty pleasant, actually. It seems like every year negotiations have never been, have never been tense and they've always been welcoming. And I appreciate your guys' efforts and what you do and then also the members from the Sheriff's Union for their leadership as well.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. That concludes the new business. We'll move on to old business. The reason why we're here is to finalize the 2024 budget. Before we get started, I'll go ahead and go over the budget goals this evening. These are the same as past meetings. Number one, adopt a reasonable budget, one, that meets our needs and minimizes the needs for additional appropriations. Two, have reasonable wages and benefits for our employees. And three, maintain a reasonable operating balance for each of the funds. With that being said, this evening, you should have several items in your packet this evening at your table. Before we get started, Angie, would you give us an update on the 4B?
The 4B that you have tonight is after the final hearing that we had, all the, everything that has been approved so far. Anything that has not been adopted at this time is still at the requested amount. So there's still a lot of room in this 4B to adjust.
Is there any questions or comments regarding the 4B report? If there are none, I'll move into the various outstanding budget issues we have. And before we get started, I typically want to go ahead and address the raises for county employees because that eliminates a lot of the questions we have throughout this process. So what the committee's recommendation is, which is Mr. Scott and Mr. Lemming, we're recommending a 5% increase for county employees. And that's excluding the state mandated raises, the public defender, the prosecutor in 4D, the clerk in voter election, and elected officials, and the Sheriff's Union because they have a contract. When it comes to the public defender, there's attached worksheet that you should have that I'm recommending that we would approve. And then also within the prosecutor's office, I recommend that we, I mean, the committee recommends that we approve what the prosecutor has requested. And then when it comes to excluding the elected officials from the 5%, there is a, also a wage comparison worksheet in your packet this evening. I believe it's near the back. It's the last page. And that would be the recommendation from the committee to bring the average of those elected officials position up to an average comparable to other counties. Mr. Lemming or Mr. Scott, is that clear on the request or any questions or comments?
Yeah, just a quick comment on the last. The, it's a nine-county average and it's comparable, comparable to other elected officials in our county. And then that would get us closer to the averages that were constantly being given every meeting. I don't know how else I would present that.
Exactly how I would present. Those who have been around for a while know that we've had our struggles and meeting budgetary requirements. And even though we will never, you know, be able to fix that entirely, we're in a position to be able to make some adjustments and address some of the issues that we've had in the past. And I'm thankful that we have the ability to be able to make, you know, to be able to make these adjustments and recognize the efforts and, you know, what's put on from, that our county employees give us and the leadership from our elected officials as well. You know, a small token of, oh, thank you and step in the right direction.
Then as far as like the prosecutor, we're pretty much doing as he requested. And then the public defender, we'd had a meeting with them outside of here just to see where we were really at, what the means were to it, the meat, potatoes. And we're looking at a two-year process to get them what they want to be, what they should be. And that is also going to be taken care of at a pretty substantial rate. So it's a little above some of the others. But we're trying to work extremely hard to get us to a point where we're very competitive to keep our people here that is really putting in the time and the effort. So we're trying to reward the people in that way. That's all I have.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or comments from the members? Do we need a motion in a second for that? Or you want to put that as the final or how do you?
That's up to you.
Put a motion.
You have a motion of some sort to make it official.
Yeah.
You have the documentation that you need to be able to make all the changes.
Would make, I would put that in the form of a motion as you presented it with the raises.
We got to each one separate or?
How about the part-time, because you want to address that at this time too?
Well, we can do that.
Separately?
Separately. Do I have a motion in a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Lemming and a second from Mr. Scott to approve a 5% increase for county employees excluding those that receive the state mandated raises, excluding the public defender because he has, there's an attached worksheet that we will approve for the public defender as well as the prosecutor in 4D, excluded the 5%. But we're going to go ahead and approve the requested worksheet from them. We're going to exclude the clerk and the voters in election because they've already received a substantial raise this year, I think it's 10% or something. And then exclude the elected officials from the 5%, but we're going to bring the, bring the elected officials up to comparable wages, see the attached worksheet for that as well. And then, is that the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any public input? Roll call, please.
Just, Lemming?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Hicks?
Yes.
Perez? Poling?
Yes.
Middlesworth?
Yes. The other recommendation which I left out would be to bring the sheriff's, the chief deputy or chief to 67,000. And then part-time to
fourteen.
Fourteen dollars an hour minimum.
Is it 5%?
5% or 14?
Okay.
Yeah. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Lemming, a second from Mr. Scott to approve bringing the sheriff's chief to 67,000 as well as the part-time county officials, bringing the minimum to 14 dollars an hour or 5%. Any other questions or comments from the members? Public input? Roll call, please.
Lemming?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Hicks?
Yes.
Poling?
Yes.
Middlesworth?
Yes. Okay, moving on, you should have the outstanding budget issues in front of you. These are my notes. So we'll go through the ones that we've already not addressed with those raises. The county sheriffs requesting medical and hospital, which option should you choose? As well as, you know, the sheriff's gave us a worksheet from quality correctional care. You can see the options, one, two, and three. Is there any questions or comments or is there a motion? If there's no motion, I'll move on. We'll just leave it as the same. Next item under the sheriff is the recommendation contribution to the pension. Typically in years past, we've always done the recommended rate. It's 963,420 and that is what we've worked up in the budget. Any other questions or comments? Do we need action on that?
I think you should.
Okay, is there a motion regarding the contribution for the pension fund?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to, in recommend doing the contribution of 963,420 for the pension fund. Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Lemming, a second from Mr. Scott to approve the recommended rate from McCreary to the pension fund in the amount of 963,420. Any other questions or comments from the members? Public input? Roll call, please.
Lemming?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Hicks?
Yes.
Poling?
Yes.
Middlesworth?
Yes. Motion carries. There's nothing for the corner. Item three, county recorder, Justin's recommendations are in your packet as well. Each year, he has been preparing an outlier salary recommendation for county employees. Within the county recorder, his recommendation is to increase the chief deputy's pay 2,500. It would be my recommendation to accept Justin's recommendation and include the 5% as well on these positions or these recommendations. So it'd be 2,500 dollar increase to the chief deputy within the county recorder. And again, his recommendation packets in your table, here at your table this evening. What about just making a motion to approve all adjustments requests or his, okay? So if you look at item three, it'd be 2,500 dollar increase to the chief deputies. Also, number eight, he's recommending the county extension office, a thousand dollar increase to the second deputy.
Do you just want to go by Justin's email that lists them?
Number, yeah, 14 is 2,000 in the surveyor, chief deputies. And then the drainage secretary, the recommendation would be a 3,000 raise. The second deputy, which I've already mentioned with Purdue's 1,000. The health secretary, he's recommending an additional 1,000. And the vital records clerk, 1,000. And I believe those are the only recommendations we have.
Do you want to include health secretary and vitals at this time since we still have to go over that budget?
Yeah, we probably shouldn't, should we? So we'll accept Justin's recommendation for the recorder at the 2,500, the surveyor at the 2,000, the drainage secretary at 3,000, the second deputy for Purdue at 1,000. And these are the chief deputy, recorder, and surveyor. That makes sense? If there's a motion?
Mr. President moved to approve Mr. Sadoff's recommendations regarding chief deputies and recorder and surveyor's office as well as the drainage secretary and second deputy for county extension.
Second, I have a motion from Mr. Scott, a second from Mr. Lemming to accept Mr. Sadoff's recommendation as far as the outliers when it comes to salaries. Within the chief deputy recorder recommending an additional 2,500. Also, the chief deputy surveyor, an additional 2,000. A drainage secretary, an additional 3,000, as well as second deputy within the Purdue, 1,000. Any other questions or comments from the members? The public input? Roll call, please.
Scott?
Hi.
Lemming?
Hi.
Hicks?
Yes.
Poling?
Yes.
Middlesworth?
Yes. Motion carries, so that takes off number three. We've already took care of item number four. Or do we need to address the second bullet point, number four? I think we took care of it. We'll move on to item number six, area plan commission. Mr. Malat requested a new full-time code enforcement secretary and keep a part-time permits clerk versus both at part-time. He also requested the permits clerk to 1290, max 28 hours, but we just took care of that. Is there any recommendations from the members? Again, Mr. Malat requested a new full-time code enforcement secretary and keep a part-time permits clerk versus both at part-time. I believe he did reduce the part-time funds by 10,000 roughly. My only comment would be that currently we do have two building inspectors and I just wonder if we shouldn't address something like at the next meeting regarding this request. That way, we're not just putting it off until next year, but.
You have time, right?
Yeah, we have time, yeah. So if there can be. Is there a motion?
You have a motion to table until next meeting?
I mean, that's fine.
Mr. President moved to make a motion to table the area plan commission request of hiring a new full-time code enforcement secretary and keeping a part-time permits clerk until our next meeting. Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Scott, a second from Mr. Poling to table Mr. Malat's request regarding the budget request within the full-time code enforcement secretary as well as the part-time permits clerk. Any other questions or comments from the members? Public input? Roll call, please.
Scott?
Hi.
Poling?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Lemming?
Hi.
Middlesworth?
Yes. Motion carries. We'll move on to number seven, emergency medical services. Mr. Ashcraft requested we raise part-time rates to increase to 1524 for drivers and 24 EMTs. Do we allow the restructuring as well of the director in the biller position? So Mr. Ashcraft is also requesting we eliminate the medical billing administrator and create a certified coder biller at 32,760. I would recommend to this body that we approve the recommendation of the part-time rates for the EMTs as well as the driver. And I did have some conversation with commissioners regarding the position restructuring and I would recommend that we approve that as well.
Part-time is going to at least keep us competitive with the rates that we have surrounding us from hospital and so forth.
Yeah, so this, at this rate would keep us competitive with Marion is the thought process with MGH.
Which would be important for us to.
Yes.
I agree. Ready for a motion?
Yeah, I'm ready for a motion.
Mr. President moved to approve the part-time increase for emergency medical services as well as Mr. Ashcraft's request to eliminate medical billing administrator and create a certified coder biller at 32,760. Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Scott, a second from Mr. Poling to approve the emergency medical service request regarding the part-time rates, 1524 for drivers and 20 dollars for EMTs. And also allow Mr. Ashcraft the ability to eliminate the medical billing administrator and create a certified coder biller at 32,760. We have everything we need, Angie. Any other questions or comments from the members? Public input? Yeah, just come up to the podium.
I just want to make sure that the part-time people now don't make more than the full-time supervisors with their 5% increase, do they?
I'd have to figure it.
Because 5% on the supervisors may not equate to the part-time increase you just gave. I don't, I don't know the math.
What's the number?
The current rate is 34,026 plus your 5%. Divide that by 1820.
Point nine three four. Did I do something wrong here? It's like a 1,700 dollar increase, right?
Currently a 18.
Supervisors.
Right.
Okay. Second. Yeah, it's 17.
What's wrong with your test?
I don't know. That's what I was wondering. Geez, not me.
It wasn't you. She can't do it, nobody can.
It's almost the same.
I say what? Um, 1820. 19.615.
So it would be?
It would be more.
That makes the part-time people make more than the full-time supervisors. You feel like that's an issue?
Bring it down to 19.
We would need to amend the second or have amended motion then. Or do you want to vote on this motion? We need to have an amendment motion. Okay. Men the motion to have the EMT drivers at the 19 dollar an hour rate be the amended motion and then we'd vote on that.
Good, good, good observation.
I mean, the full-time people do get benefits, but on paper, it always looks happy. Okay. And?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion? I need a motion to amend the, we gotta vote on the, we have to amend the motion then vote on it.
You're doing a motion to amend the prior motion.
Yeah.
Which the prior motion was the 20.
20, yeah.
Need a motion to amend that to 19. Mr. President, I move to amend our previous motion for emergency medical services with the following change, reducing part-time rate for
EMTs.
EMTs from 20 dollars to 19 dollars per hour. Second.
I have a motion to amend the EMT wage rate from 20 to 19, a motion from Mr. Scott. The EMT wage rate from twenty to nineteen, a motion from Mr. Scott, a second from Mr. Polling. Any other questions or comments from the members? Uh, public input? Uh, roll call, please.
Scott.
Hi.
Polling.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Lemming.
Hi.
Middlesworth.
Yes, and then I have a motion to approve the EMT medical services, uh, part-time rates, the fifteen twenty-four for drivers. And nineteen for EMTs, the original motion. Any other questions or comments from the members? Public input? Uh, roll call, please.
First and second.
Scott.
Scott and Chuck, I think.
And it was to create that one in order of the.
And the, and, and create the building coder, the thirty-two seven sixty as well, correct? The original motion, correct?
Okay, Scott.
Hi.
Polling.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Lemming.
All right.
Middlesworth.
Yes. Okay, I think, I believe item seven is finished. Item eight's through that. Um, Angie will, as far as the commissioner's budget goes, she will establish the non-salary items, the FICA, the perf, the health insurance, the life insurance, unemployment, workman's comp. Um, we'll move on, the county is contractually obligated to transfer a hundred and eleven thousand regarding the central dispatch fund. Five hundred and eleven. That's it?
Hundred eleven.
Oh, five, five hundred and eleven thousand. Uh, currently, there is a cash balance, and we believe, uh, working the numbers, that the five hundred and eleven will be sufficient to support the central best, central dispatch operating fund. Do we need a motion to approve the five hundred and eleven?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the five hundred and eleven thousand, which is contractually obligated to the central dispatch fund?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Scott, a second from Mr. Lemming to approve the transfer of five hundred and eleven thousand, which is contractually obligated to the central dispatch fund without any additional county dollars. Any public input? Uh, roll call, please.
Scott.
Hi.
Lemming.
Hi.
Hicks.
Yes.
Polling.
Yes.
Middlesworth.
Yes. Motion carries. Uh, the commissioners request an additional increase. Uh, from six thousand to nine thousand, which is fifty percent for compensation for drainage board members. The members would be paid seventy-five dollars per meeting rather than fifty dollars per meeting. Um. Thoughts, comments from the members?
Keeping it the same, I don't see any reason to increase at this point.
There's no motion, we'll move on. Uh, we approve the next bullet point as well, uh, the increase for the drainage board secretary. Uh, the disaster fund, um, will have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the max for this fund is two hundred and fifty. Do we continue to fund the request? It's something that we've continually done, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't. Do we need a motion to approve that?
To keep it a hundred and fifty thousand.
Well, that motion, uh.
Fifty thousand dollar.
Yeah.
Transfer funds.
It'll be two hundred thousand.
Yeah, yes.
There is a ordinance that we created when that fund was established that capped the dollar amount at two hundred and fifty thousand. And just while I'm thinking about this, um, you know, the dumpsters we paid for a while back?
Yeah, we paid like.
Yes, they were not covered under that.
They couldn't have been in this fund?
No.
That's interesting, because I mean, you think disaster relief.
I don't remember the reason why, but.
Yeah, maybe I'll make a note of that, because I just, I just thought of that. Okay, is there a motion to approve, uh, the fifty thousand dollar um, appropriation within the disaster relief fund?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Scott, a second from Mr. Polling to approve the fifty thousand dollars for the disaster relief fund. Any other questions or comments from the members? Public input? Uh, roll call, please.
Scott.
Hi.
Polling.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Lemming.
Hi.
Middlesworth.
Yes. Motion carries. Um, we'll move on to the public defenders piece, which we addressed at the beginning of the meeting. The committee met with Mr. Elliott, Mr. Lewis, and you had the attached schedule. Uh, do we take surface number two bullet point as well? No?
I, I kind of think maybe you should consider it, just a thought.
Uh, the request is a consideration, a salary increase for the secretary to be comparable to the prosecutor's office manager, uh, forty thousand dollars. It's a thousand dollar increase, is that correct?
Yeah, her current salary is thirty-three two forty-one, that position. Which is well below any secretary or office manager. In prosecutor's office, well, well.
But we approve, we approve this worksheet, though.
That is not part of that, I don't believe she's on that worksheet.
Okay, what? Oh.
Oh, is that the prosecutor?
Yeah, well, my look.
I'm the public defender.
Yeah, see, I know. This is.
Her and the investigator both.
Yes. They did.
And, and I do believe that that meeting, um, it was talked about, the investigator to be, the county boys would, um, be given.
I will, is there a motion, what's the will of council?
So what position is it comparable to?
Yeah.
Prosecutor's office.
Prosecutor's office, I kind of looked at, um, office manager because she is conservative in office manager.
Yeah, I.
And even what is on the sheet, it's less than what the office manager is making.
Just full-time, part-time.
It is full-time.
It looks like it'd be comparable at the thirty-nine thousand comparable from the prosecutor to the public defender, maybe, roughly? Office manager.
Yeah, because the prosecutor's secretary can get five percent.
Well, he, no, well.
So she's going to be at pretty close to forty thousand. So in order to make the, um, public defender secretary, you're going to give her about a five thousand dollar raise. Right? So you're looking at thirty-one thousand times five percent plus five, so it's going to get you about thirty-eight, thirty.
Yeah.
So you'd have to give her five thousand. Yeah, you go across. And then go down, change people from thirty-eight thousand. Thirty-eight five.
Yeah, you want to do.
That's forty-five. Yeah, that's a seven. So this was her last.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, five thousand, right, it's close. What's the, what's the office manager salary prosecutor's office? For twenty-three.
Um, it is. Office manager's forty-five, seven ninety-six. That's for the prosecutor, the, um, four D, office manager is. Forty-four, nine forty, like I said, it's.
Yeah, it's reasonable, it seems like.
The forty?
Yeah. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, regarding public defenders, I've moved to accept the recommendation to increase. The office manager slash secretary. The forty thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Scott, a second from Mr. Lemming to increase within the public defenders, uh, fund, the secretary, um, at the wage rate of forty thousand. Any other questions or comments from the members? Public input? Uh, roll call, please.
Scott.
Hi.
Lemming.
Hi.
Hicks.
Yes.
Polling.
Yes.
Middlesworth.
Yes. And then, within the public defenders, we still need to establish the chins and contractual amounts, is that correct?
Yes, and I have those, just one second.
So how do you do the five percent, does it include the five percent?
I don't think the.
You're, you're, the forty thousand, that is just what you're getting, she's, it's, yeah, not subject to the five. And the contractual service piece would be ninety-six, eight twenty. Contractual chin, contractual chins is fifty-five thousand.
So the request would be to establish within the public defenders, the contractual amounts, is there just, you want a total? Or they, are they broke down in both?
They're broke down.
They are?
Yes.
Um. Ninety-six thousand eight hundred and twenty regarding contractual, and then within chins is fifty-five thousand. Is there a motion?
Those are all divvy that based on who takes care of the case.
Yeah.
And it's on your PDA worksheet.
Okay. Yeah, I'd make a motion, Mr. President, to accept those as requested. So I.
I have a motion from Mr. Lemming, a second from Mr. Scott to, within the public defenders, uh, budget, establish the contractual amount of ninety-six thousand eight hundred and twenty. As well as the chins amount at fifty-five thousand. Any other questions or comments from the members? Uh, public input? Uh, roll call, please.
Lemming.
Hi.
Scott.
Hi.
Hicks.
Yes.
Polling.
Yes.
Middlesworth.
Yes. Motion carries. That takes care of item eleven, we'll move on to number twelve, soup two, uh, consideration for a court reporter salary increase to forty-four thousand nine hundred. You should have received a letter this evening at, at your table, um. Uh, Judge McVicker had emailed me, uh, requesting that his court reporter be funded at the forty-four thousand nine hundred. And. He. Believe that, you know, compared to other counties, that that position was low. I had Mr. Sadoff, HR director, compare us to other counties. And we are not in the bottom, uh, when it comes to the court reporter position. And that was not one of the ones that he identified as an outlier. And that he made the recommendation not to change it. So. If there's no motion, I'll move on. Uh, number thirteen, treasurer, um, do we consider an additional full-time second deputy at thirty thousand? Um, when the treasurer presented her, a budget, she, uh. Made the request verbally, she didn't include it in her budget, but she verbally requested that we make the second deputy, uh, full-time position, that the hourly, um, position she just continually turned over. And the request is to make that second deputy position, uh, full-time at thirty thousand. And how much part-time does that remove, do you know?
I, I honestly, I don't know.
Right.
I didn't get those metals. I would think it would cut it in half at least.
Yeah. Now, do we want to consider this, or we want to move on?
I was okay with it, I guess, I, I didn't see an issue, we're going to eliminate it part-time and make it full-time. It's up to the will of the council, she said she would be back.
Yeah, her overtime request was for forty thousand, so if you take the thirty out of that, she got ten.
You still got interns. Full-time, right, or do they got interns part-time?
No.
They don't have any sure some parts, just for emergency.
There's enough work to.
I can't answer that.
I can't either.
According to Tiffany, yes. And I think her reasoning for that is because it is so hard to replace part-time when they leave, that the only incentive of keeping them is to hire them full-time. I think that was her argument.
Which the part-time's at twenty-eight hours, correct?
Yes.
I mean, she could always come back this year, or next year, or whatever, no need to do anything. If there's a, is there a motion? There is none, I'll move on. We already took care of fourteen. Um, within the clerk's budget, this is the twenty twenty-four, is a pres- presidential election year, do we adopt the requested amounts for voting? Uh, machine mechanics, roving, board mileage, absentee voter boards, canvas boards, and assistance in precinct board, primary in general. I would make the recommendation that we, uh, adopt what the clerk has requested, and that's typically what we've done in the past. So regarding the. What fund is that technically?
It's county general, but it's the election board budget.
And you're correct, in the past, we have on election year made increases.
So the recommendation would be to accept the clerk's request regarding the election board budget at the recommended, uh, rates? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Scott, a second for Mr. Lemming to approve within the clerk's, uh, budget, the election board budget at the requested rates. Any other questions or comments from the members? Public input? Uh, roll call, please.
Scott.
Hi.
Lemming.
Aye.
Hicks?
Yes.
Polling?
Yes.
Middlesworth?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, now we're to the health fund, um, we need to revisit the salary parts for eleven fifty-nine. Do we approve the requests, uh, within eleven sixty-one? Do you consider those salary changes? And then also, uh, bullet point, the thousand dollar increase, uh, to the health secretary and vital records clerk was Justin's recommendation, but I think that's one of those that'll be changing with the requests.
Can I speak?
Yeah, hold on, and just to note that the local health maintenance fund, uh, will be ending twelve thirty-one twenty-three, as well as the local health department trust account. Um, twelve oh six, when twelve thirty-one twenty-three. And then the innu- immunizations and vaccine fund will end twelve thirty-one twenty-three. So yeah, go, if you want to come up and speak about.
I'm a little confused about the eleven sixty-one because I thought you already approved.
They did, they have already approved this, I think we just wanted to talk about possibly revisiting.
I think at the time we approved them, but it was kind of pending on the, the raise amounts that we were gonna give county employees versus, uh, the, you know, what you'd requested as far as those funds.
I would like to say, and I think in the packet that I originally sent you, um, the state department of health did a workforce assessment and provided feedback, and even with the requested pay increases, the only staff we have that would be making the state average for health department employees, serving fifteen, a hundred thousand people, would be our nurses. Everybody else is still under that, some by less than a thousand and some by several thousands still.
In your packet, you should have received the comparison from twenty-three to twenty-four. Is there any questions regarding these requests as far as the salary amounts?
Do we have anywhere, what the state, do we have?
I can go make a, or I can, you can look at mine if you'd like. The, the far right is, um, the state recommendations for, for those salaries serving those populations. Or those, I mean, those positions serving those populations.
But are part of the salaries that you're talking about, part of the state monies and the grants, that's getting the salary?
On that form, I think, can I look at it? The yellow is what you already appro, that's out of the state money, and the green is county funds. And we will still be, I mean, our request is still, still sixty-seven thousand less than our twenty-twenty-three recr- request I mean, approved budgets in salaries. So we're not asking for more county funds. I feel like.
I, I guess I'm confused because it looks to me like you're about eighty thousand dollar more in salary request. On my sheet.
Well, I do.
Out of eleven fifty-nine?
Well, there's still got the total. The total.
Uh, those two different accounts.
But if you look at.
It's the same.
If you look at eleven fifty-nine, it's.
Twenty-four sixty-nine and twenty-three is three seventy-seven.
So you're just looking at eleven fifty-nine and saying that you're sixty thousand dollars less?
I'm requesting sixty thousand less than last year, correct?
And then your total budget's eighty thousand dollars more, and, and that's coming in from these grants or state money?
Oh, my total budget's a lot more. But it's, yes, it's the state funding. I didn't bring all of my, the rest of the budget request, it's, it's seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars in state funding coming in. The state's providing additional funding to, only four counties in the state did not take the additional funding. So every county surrounding us is gonna receive these same funds. I could easily lose well-trained staff to a surrounding county willing to pay more. It's, it's happened historically over and over and over to us. It's really hard to recruit and retain people when they go, as with sheriff's department, when they can go next door and make ten thousand more.
Yeah, but you al, you already gave them, didn't you already give them a raise out of this money you're getting?
You've approved, you did not. You approved the ones in yellow, but I understand we're revisiting that too. I, I, when Mr. Lemming questioned what happens if the funding goes away, as I prepared this budget, I thought, okay, I will prepare it with that in mind. I kept all positions that you couldn't function without on eleven fifty-nine. I transferred every other position to the new eleven sixty-one. So the leadership, the health officer, the, the lead nurse, the head of each division, myself.
You could live without me, but. I'm gonna take my warm bath.
I guess what I look at this, well, I looked at the sheet as far as requested, it just seems like that you, you know, there's certain physicians that really get a big bump, um, you know, take your position, for instance, is six thousand dollar job, which is quite a bit.
I believe they're all five thousand.
So under your request, why would some salaries be more than the state average and some be less than the state average?
I believe it's only the nursing that's more than the state average, and it's minimally more. And the head nurse said, don't even request a raise for me if that's what it takes to get my other staff a pay increase. I, I did five thousand across the board, um, on the pay increases. And I would sacrifice a pay increase myself if I could just not take a pay cut.
So you went to five thousand and the five percent were given everybody else?
No. I mean, they wouldn't decline it, but no, I'm not requesting the five percent as well.
So what's the state average for the environmental specialist?
The head, department head is forty-nine thousand. And I'm asking forty-six, five, five, three.
I'll say that again.
For the, the environmental depart- department head?
Yeah.
Forty-nine thousand. I'm requesting forty-six, five, five, three.
Okay. When you, when I look at this sheet, it's, you know, the administrator, you're requesting fifty-one thousand four oh nine, correct?
Correct.
And then what you paid be, was paid before is forty-five thousand four oh nine.
Six thousand.
That's six thousand.
Okay.
And what's the state average for the regis, register?
It starts thirty-nine thousand.
Same with the bill for work.
And the health officer, he, he went up almost pretty close, six thousand.
We do have a new health officer, um, Dr. Woods. I didn't invite her tonight, but she's literally two weeks on the job.
So the nurse's salary actually. Stay.
Is all, that is correct.
So in new in twenty-twenty-six and new in tw- twenty-twenty-seven, are those not gonna be in, in the budget? I mean, you've got them listed here, but.
Correct. With the state, the state funding that we're getting will double for twenty-twenty-six, so we are adding them at that time. Hoping to find out at that time.
So we're really not budgeting those two positions?
Correct.
So, according to your worksheet, that, that's showing the, the state's average for nurse is sixty thousand, is that correct?
For the head nurse.
The head nurse.
So worst-case scenario, I would like to at least leave her at her current salary. I, I don't want to give her a pay cut.
Which is the sixty-five thousand, six ninety-eight?
Yes.
What other items could these, these be used for as far as, I know you submitted the budget. It was there any, you know, where's everyone gonna go, I guess, I mean, as far as space?
For this year, we're only adding two new positions.
Okay.
One is nursing, we're still working that out, we thought we had a plan, and um, and the other is an environmental health specialist, which we'll go back with the, to the two that we currently.
Okay.
So you're paying both the environmental specialists the same money?
Yeah, the, yes. Not the department head, but the additional two.
So you're gonna have three altogether?
Correct. I know, that's, that's to accept this funding, their responsibilities are going to grow exponentially.
Well, ours is growing too, because we still gotta pay insurance for these people, right?
Nope, I'm absorbing the insurance out of the state funding. The state-paid employees will, the state funding will absorb their cost.
And if these jobs go away like this, they just lose their job? Or you come to us and say, you guys gotta make all of that?
Okay. Is there any other questions or comments?
Your school liaison, is that, is that a nurse?
Yeah. We, it isn't required to be a nurse, but part of our, the job description for grant county is gonna be that it has to be an. It's much more complicated if it, if the school liaison is not a nurse. It's just a lot that's what she was. A nurse can ask for.
I kinda need to digest it, but I wanted to just verbalize this back to you, see if it makes sense if I'm on the right page. Our sheet's showing these two positions at the bottom. Twenty-six, twenty-seven, so those technically aren't even, shouldn't even be listed on this sheet, because we're looking at twenty-twenty-four budget, correct?
Oh, no, the school liaison should be on this budget. I, I'm not sure how that happened. The school liaison, second from the bottom.
Okay.
That's for twenty-twenty-four.
Correct.
And the vital records clerk?
They're, those are both new, twenty-twenty-four. I think Excel just counted upwards for you.
So all four of them will be in twenty-twenty-four?
There you go, two.
So you, yeah, you're up four new ones.
Now, the, the public health nurse, we already have, she's just been grant flushes. And we're shifting her, and that grant, because we accepted the state funding, that grant will go away.
Okay.
So we're asking for three new positions. Out of the state funding, not county.
So the, the budget, the, when I go across then, you'd have three hundred and twenty-nine thousand under the eleven fifty-nine fund. You'd have three hundred and six thousand, just some change, under the eleven sixty-one fund. Um, you have, uh, seventy-three, eighty-three under the one thousand oh thirty-one fund. That total should be like six hundred and forty-three thousand, seven eighty-five. You agree with that?
Probably.
It sure looks like they're out there, whatever.
I mean, that's a big difference than what we're talking about. My first number was like eighty-seven thousand. And then to look at it and think that I, I don't need to fund these two for two more years, and I really, you're telling me I need to fund them. I, I didn't see your presentation, I apologize for that. I'm just trying to catch up, and I had to see some numbers that didn't match up to me. And you're looking at the dollar amount, right?
The division is correct.
I just think it's a lot for me to digest right now. Just trying to make sure my numbers are what I think they are.
While the math is off, the categories are correct. So the eleven sixty-one is the new state funding.
Okay.
The eleven fifty-nine is county funding.
Okay.
Let's say hypothetically that you don't fill, you know, these positions, where does the money go then?
New position?
Yeah, the new positions.
We will get one big payment January first. And what we don't use, I mean, we're required to meet the budget that we submitted with best of our ability. What we don't use just stays here in the county to be used on public health. But.
But stays in your fund?
Yeah, stays in the health fund.
Was there a lot of requirements to what, what can be used on? I mean, is there any certain things that could be?
We have specific KPIs. There, there are ten I'd leave.
Seen them?
For public services.
Well.
I sent all you guys a great presentation.
I think we have seen them. Do we remember them now?
Old news. I'm, I apologize, I should have resented.
There was a lot to digest then too.
Okay.
We have specific KPIs that we have to meet. Are they unreasonable? No. It's seventy, sixty-five, seventy percent of it we already do, we just don't document it to the state of Indiana.
This is one we have the table, I know you got a lot of figures written in. Yeah. I hope it was.
You just want, what he, what he's, what do you, what's the will of the councils?
So the one sheet that you just brought to mind, that is what the state department of health recommended?
This column is for health departments serving fifty to one hundred thousand residents. That is the salaries for those positions that are recommended, yes.
As, as by, from the state department of health?
They're, they're, they had local health department workforce assessment.
Yeah, but we, we should really be from zero to fifty thousand, not fifty to a hundred thousand.
Populations, less than fifty thousand?
Oh, yeah. I think the last time I checked, it was like forty-eight thousand.
We was hovering.
Grant county?
Yeah.
Sixty-six thousand, right, yeah.
No, I don't think so. Actually, I think Ron Mounter checked that right before he left. Because we had just had a, some kind of thing, and it was right around forty-eight thousand people. Mr. Gluck, Dave Gluckler, he knows the number.
That's.
We're just not under sixty-five thousand.
S G T P.
So the school liaison and vital records, we are or are not putting in twenty-four?
We are.
That, yeah, they are, all that's.
Those you approved.
And the new special, environmental specialist.
All of those you are, you approved at the previous meeting.
Yeah, because you, you, you brought it here, and we had to hurry up and approve it so you could get the money, correct? So it might, well, we have to follow this now, is what, really, basically.
Oh, I mean, it's, it's adjustable, but there's no way we can meet the requirements of the money without the school liaison.
That, that's what I'm saying, though.
That is.
I'm saying, I'm saying, when you brought this to us, you brought it, we only had like, what, a day or two, you had to turn it in?
I prepared you guys a month in advance and invited every one of you to come to my office, and I would sit down and explain it all.
Now, we've approved the concept, it's just whether or not, whether or not these dollar amounts are, you know, the salary amounts are, what the will the council, or, or do you want to lower them, or?
According to Google, our census is sixty-six thousand.
I think we, we say we weren't, let us look at these.
Fifty-six thousand. Who was it, what?
Sixty-six thousand.
Sixty-six.
What's the percent of error? Ask Google.
What year was that?
Twenty twenty census.
What?
The twenty twenty census.
Yeah.
Four years.
Lost a lot of businesses stuff in four years.
Do you want to come back and revisit it, or do you want to prove it as a percentage, or?
Still over fifty.
Me too.
It is.
It's around forty-eight, yeah.
Twenty-three is sixty-five, six fifty-seven.
I'll get with Gluck, Bill. I'll get the numbers, because we got from the state.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to table the health fund. Till next meeting.
Will you call me with your questions? Email me your questions, and I can have your answers, or?
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Scott, a second from Mr. Polling, to table the salary requests regarding the health fund.
So where I'm at is comparing all these salary amounts. Trying to make sense of where that should be.
Okay. As you look across, the, the grant funds will disappear when this happens, so keep that in mind.
But the grant fund will disappear, but we'll still have the funding in the state, so it doesn't really change what the salary should.
Right, right.
In my opinion, yes.
Okay. Is there any other questions or comments from the members?
You'll email me your questions?
Thank you. Public input? Roll call, please.
Scott.
Aye.
Polling.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Lemming.
Aye.
Middlesworth.
Yes.
Motion carries. We'll put that on the agenda for the next meeting.
I've got it for you.
We'll move on to the unsafe building fund, which we did approve that, correct? Surveyor perpetuation fund, we approved that as well. Do you want to give a synopsis of the health insurance fund, layout?
CCD.
We approved CCD too, yep.
Sorry.
So the health insurance fund is solid at this time financially. In fact, the recommendations as far as the funding, you can see below. General fund, these are these set in stone, or are we going to adjust them when we finalize?
That's what I need you to do, is prove what is on here.
Okay. We'll approve for the total, the health insurance fund is the seven million dollars, which has stayed the same for several years now. But the general fund contribution will be two million thirty-eight thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars. Seat of fund contribution will be one million five hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. MVH fund contribution will be four hundred and thirty-one thousand four hundred and forty dollars. The health fund contribution will be one hundred and twenty-one thousand three hundred. The reassessment fund contribution will be eighty-six thousand one hundred and fifty. Central dispatch fund contribution will be one hundred and eighty-nine thousand five hundred and thirty. County nine eleven fund contribution will be thirty-four thousand four hundred and sixty. Other fund contributions will be six hundred and thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and three. Employee withholdings, three hundred and ninety thousand. Retiree contributions is at zero, and the miscellaneous is at a hundred and ninety thousand, which is bringing the total to five million seven hundred and five thousand. And obviously, there's going to be a cash balance. And just want to acknowledge that it's important to understand that the funding of this plan must be reviewed in detail and every, every year. And the financial status of the health insurance fund is something that we continue to, to monitor every meeting, so. Is there a motion to approve the, those contributions to the health insurance fund?
So be it.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Polling, a second from Mr. Lemming, to approve the health insurance fund contributions as presented. Any other questions or comments from the members? Public input? Roll call, please.
Polling.
Yes.
Lemming.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Hicks.
Yes.
Middlesworth.
Yes.
Motion carries. Take a break. We'll take a five-minute break, recess.
It's, it's eyeballs swimming over there.
Yeah, I, I was confused, I guess. I missed the presentation, too.
We want to take care of these bugging two items as we finalize the twenty twenty-four budget. We approve the no-cost extension grant. Adult core enhancement grant, another extension.
Is that one?
We need to approve the no-cost extension fund ninety-one thirty-four and pre-trial ninety-one forty-five.
Both the grants have already been approved. So the motion would be to approve pre-trial grant ninety-one forty-five, as well as ninety-one thirty-four, the, the adult drug enhancement grant, correct?
Yes.
So no dollar amounts, we need to stay just a.
As presented.
The no-cost extension is the twenty-one thousand one twenty-five fifty-one. The other dollar amount.
Forty-eight, nine fifty-four.
Is there a motion?
Second.
My motion from Mr. Scott, a second, make to approve both ninety-one thirty-four and ninety-one forty-five grants, twenty-one thousand one hundred and twenty-five fifty-one, as well as two forty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-four. Any other questions or comments from the members? Public input? Paul, please.
Scott.
Okay.
Lemming.
Aye.
Hicks.
Yes.
Polling.
Yes.
Middlesworth.
Yes. Motion carries. I believe we'll move on to the NVH fund, eleven seventy-six. Mr. White requested an increase in buyout days. Appropriation from ten thousand to thirty thousand. I'm guessing he has someone that's retired more so than, than normal.
I believe so.
He's requesting those to be moved from ten to thirty thousand. Is there a motion?
Vote. Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Scott, a second from Mr. Lemming, to approve within the NVH fund eleven seventy-six, an increase in appropriation within buyout days from ten thousand to thirty thousand. Any other questions or comments from the members? Roll call, please.
Scott.
Aye.
Lemming.
Aye.
Hicks.
Yes.
Polling.
Yes.
Middlesworth.
Yes. Obviously, you can't use it unless you.
That's correct.
We approve Puma Bridge, local road streets approved. We approve the county wheel tax fund. Lot of fund we approve, I believe.
That sounds.
We bet's. Are we to review the financial position?
Mr. President, let me take you up a little bit. Would you want any type of a line item for rainy day fund?
As far as like the budget amount?
We put that in the council's budget? Would that be the, where, where would we put?
Yeah, you could put it in to, to, to transfer funds for a rainy day, yes.
We've had it, we haven't had it, it just seems like it makes sense to have an emergency access somehow. To me, in my mind, a percentage of something that would automatically go there, but I don't know what that, it's a mathematical equation. Or maybe it's a dollar amount, I don't know, but it just seems like that, to me, just to make sure that that fund continues to build or replenish, that there would be a percentage calculation based off of a cash balance or something that would automatically go there. So it makes sense.
Flat amount would probably be a lot easier.
Is that, would that, that, would that change the levy amount, or? We'd say, okay, we want to move X amount of dollars here, and what if?
Just like you do the unsafe building fund, you put fifty thousand from general to. That's a bit much. This time I wouldn't recommend that much.
Come back as a recommendation from the elder for our next meeting to approve, or do you have an amount now that would make sense?
I, I don't. I mean, I can come back with a difference.
When, sir? Figure out an amount that we can do.
I think, as we've always talked about, you know, a cash balance that we always want to strive towards. I almost think that we need to.
Oh, yeah, you need that rainy day fund.
We, we should, we should have an amount of what we feel comfortable that should be sitting in there, too. I mean, maybe it's the amount total that Angie would tell us. Maybe it's something we need to work towards. I think we would want that agreement somehow between maybe us and you on how much that balance should be.
I know that the budget goals is have a healthy balance, and it's minus ten percent. Of whatever the budget would be, so I don't want that number to be so.
A number of years ago, we always wanted to be around three million, but that was always much darker times than it is right now, too, trying to work.
Take ten percent of the total, and you just, but hasn't broken the budget.
Yeah, yeah. That's what I'm saying, maybe a percentage or a calculation or something. You can.
Oh, my God, that's interesting.
We can add to it each year, can't you?
You add to it each year.
But about seven hundred thousand, or just start with that, that's a year, each year if we got it. I can put a cap on it.
The resolution.
Extra money, put it in there, and we hit a hard time, or something we've got we could always use in. Yeah, this body could have a resolution as far as a certain dollar amount can be transferred.
Over a certain period of time with a max.
So.
Are you with the max?
No.
No, you don't have to have a max, no.
Because, you know, we got it, we put it in there. If you don't.
Put it in. So is it, is it just too confusing? I mean, to say like every month a certain percentage of something automatically goes to that, to that fund, is, is that just way too?
That's very time consuming.
So at some point every year, we just come up with an amount that we want to transfer into it.
Right. We'd set it.
Into each year.
Two hundred thousand dollars.
Each year.
Yeah.
I would just set for meeting whenever, when all the bills.
Everything's paid, basically, we'll see what we have left.
Have left over, and.
Yeah. That makes sense.
I don't do transfers in the year, but.
It's hard to do additional appropriation at the end of the year.
So we could do it like our first year, January.
No, I would do it at the end of the year. Because you never know what kind of surprises you're going to have during the year.
I think we should take that into consideration. Okay, I'll review that next meeting.
Sorry, old Jeff.
Review the financial position, the projected net operating balance for December twenty-二十五, twenty three, the general fund, health fund, and reassessment fund, the Kuma Bridge Fund is eight thousand four hundred and forty-eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight, with the assumptions that projected circuit breaker losses included in those. Million. And the budgets that have been approved so far in the process are also included. The only raises that are included in that are the state mandated raises, which is to pay probation officers. And I believe we discussed the FYI. I believe that wraps up everything. We're hoping to revisit the, the health fund request. Want to.
Health, very.
And then. Sign great growth. You have anything else you didn't, that I can see?
Not that I am aware of, but I do, I'll bring it to you in October, um, next evening.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
That's all I have. Members, have you been?
Good job, Mr. President.
Meeting adjourned. I didn't go as.
Isn't it though?
It didn't go as smooth as I would like.
Yeah.
How do I do there?
You won't go to sleep tonight, I don't know, maybe if you call me a former.
Yes. Submitted invoice. Do we, do we, do you? Okay. I'm sure that. I'll have to look back at it. Bills, I am sure.
Just carries.
Yeah, but you got to get paid for. That's for sure. Okay.